For joining the January 24th meeting of the Northampton Planning Board. We always begin our public hearing asking for comment from the public on any item that is not on our agenda. We do have a hearing item starting at 7:30, but if anyone would like to make a comment on any item that is not on our agenda, please come to the podium and tell us your name and your address. Just here to observe. So, we do have a couple of administrative things. I think Wayne you're going to start us off with resilience. Is that what we're starting with?
Yeah, we can start with that. So, we have just planning and resiliency plan information and sort of a roadmap for where we're going in the next several months. And then we have an A and R, and that's about it. Did I send you minutes?
We don't have minutes, no.
So, yeah, so we can start with this.
Great.
Okay.
So, again, I hope to get discussion going. So, at the last meeting, I said we went over, you know, sort of where we're going with the planning process, and I said we'd come back based on discussion and talk about how we do Star Communities and what that meant. And there's Carolyn said we're going to go on to talk about sort of upcoming attractions that you guys are going to deal with. So, fairly quick. So, just quickly, the reason we did Star in the first place, this is now six years ago, is we know that lots of communities do sort of greenwashing, right? I read this article once when I was in the dentist's office, I'm usually reading yachting magazines, about this new really cool yacht that got two miles to the gallon crossing the Atlantic. And they were arguing with sustainable because they want it replaced got, you know, one mile to the gallon. But I'm not really sure that's like really sustainable. And so, we went through this process of saying, you know, we need to decide what kind of community we want. And so, most of our planning processes, what are we trying to get? What do we want to be when we grow up? And how are we achieving that? But if we're talking about things like greenhouse gas emissions and becoming a more resilient city, we'd like comparing to other places so that it makes some sense. So, we used Star Communities six years ago. Star is going to runs out the end of this year. We thought about renewing Star for the next five years, but we decided it didn't really make sense to renew something that's not going to be sort of accepted in the marketplace. So, we're going to switch to LEED for cities. It's frankly, I don't think it's quite as good because it's not as quite as comprehensive, but it's less work for us and it's some benefit and it's more recognizable. So, Star-
Excuse me, when you say five stars not accepted or not, is it just not recognized to the level-
Yeah, it's a lot of work to get a Star Communities. And so, in the end, in the six years it was in existence, only 75 communities signed up for it. Now, it's 20% of the population could be their big communities, but they wanted to get more, you know, like LEED for buildings clearly has acceptance in the marketplace. Star had acceptance for people like me who follow this stuff, but it was, didn't necessarily have name recognition, whereas LEED does. Star merged with US Green Building Council. US Green Building Council had this product, they were testing Star for cities, and so they put the two of them together. So, we're automatically not doing any work, a LEED for cities silver community because we were Star and Star came in. So, we're going to be going through this. I think we've decided, we sort of had three decisions. Do we stick with Star? Do we go for LEED during beta testing, which is the next three months? Or do we wait till the final LEED comes out in May? And I think we're waiting for the final LEED to come out in May. So, you're going to see this, you know, in May when the final stuff's out, we'll come back and talk to you. I just wanted to go back and sort of remind us of where we were six years ago because, you know, we think from Star and from your comprehensive plan that these are part of our mission we've been trying to follow. And so, it's nice when you don't have a meeting full of, I mean, a room full of people, you don't have a really full agenda, just sort of think, you know, why are we here? Why are you guys all giving up lots of your free time? So, you know, I just want to start with this slide. I like this slide, so I use it a lot. But about the time we were going through Star Communities, Taco Bell said, we think Northampton has a green reputation, so we want Northampton to be the first gold Taco Bell in the country. And you guys actually helped a little bit. You waived part of the traffic mitigation fee in order to help them along. And there's no question that the Taco Bell is a greener building than the McDonald's next door. But there's also no question that when that building is tired in 40 years, they're going to tear it down and start over again. And so, I like this slide because the same year that that old Pratt House was moved for, I know, I just heard you say how moving a house makes sense economically, but the house moved, and it had a statement that this house that's 120 years old, 140 years old, whatever it is, is probably more durable and probably has a better green footprint than Taco Bell, even though it's not LEED gold, it just, you know, it's a durable building. And so, that was again, part of why we thought about, what does it mean to be green, you know? What does it mean to have all these things? And it's sort of reminder. And that comment in the bottom about the community conversation, I'm convinced the more I do work in other towns, that for all, you can score things on lots of different measures, the communities that are most sustainable are the communities where that's just part of the community conversation, right? So, no matter how good leadership, no matter how much things happen in the background, if you don't have a community conversation, it doesn't go anywhere. We got a search, as an example of this, there was a survey done for Valley Bike on how successful it's been, it's been five communities, they gave their results today. And we were amused to see that as many of these things are of the survey, the 350 survey respondents, 50% of them were from Northampton and 50% were from the other four towns who are in the community. And I think it's that engagement is why we get to do lots of things. So, it's a really important part of these things. So, just quickly, this is a hard slide to read, but so Star rated us in these different things, these different categories, built environment equity, and we did really well. The way I tend to describe it is we get an A minus. We did really well and it helped us out. So, we were the first five star communities, there are only a total of four. When Cambridge came along, and so you're only supposed to quote what level star you were, three, four, or five. Cambridge came along and they got more points than we did. So, they weren't satisfied to say they're a five star community. They had to say, we're a five star community, we have more points than Northampton. But I sort of liked it, like, you know, Cambridge comparing themselves to Northampton, that's okay. So, we did well. If you notice in social equity, we did the worst score in social equity, but the reality is everybody got the worst score in social equity. You know, it's hard if you're low income to find housing, it's hard to get equal opportunities. So, we actually did really well in all the categories. Some were always really honest. We didn't, we did better in Star than we do in LEED, in part because Star gave points for things that only urban areas could do, things that only suburban areas can do, and things that only rural areas can do. And we're really all of those things. So, you know, Cambridge couldn't get points for preserving 25% of the city's open space and suburbs can't get points for having four homeless shelters, all of which we do. So, we do well. And then we just have like four or five slides just to give examples of what it does mean. So, you know, the premise for sustainability is you can't be sustainable unless you have a town center. Like, even if you have LEED certified platinum buildings that have low energy footprint and net zero and everyone drives everywhere and, you know, people who can't afford to drive aren't included, you're not really going to be sustainable. And so, a lot of the rating is how vibrant is your downtown? How much activities? How walkable is it? How much affordable housing is it? Are you trying to focus mostly affordable housing within walking distances? And so, we did really well. I think they want you to have 10% of the housing downtown be affordable. And this one, it was within, because these years move, the numbers go up and down, but within three years, you know, how much affordable housing have you gotten? And six years ago, we had 23% of the new housing in downtown was affordable. Obviously, this year and next year with the two big projects on Pleasant Street, our numbers will be really high, other years it's lower. But so, we do well there. We may be losing a little ground with PBTA cutbacks. You guys are less involved with this, but as a city, we obviously care about unemployment rates and median incomes. You probably know that we have consistently among the lowest unemployment rates in the Commonwealth, but we have relatively low median income. So, we have colleges that have a stable workforce, but we never, we never either boom or bust in the process. But so, we try to work on these things. These are old numbers because we've been doing a lot of work on this, but greenhouse gas emissions, six years ago, our target was to get to an 80% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions by 2050. Our target's now being 100% carbon neutral by 2050. But we're making progress, and so this is where some of the work you'll see going forward. We come to you and talk about how do we encourage more net energy, net zero energy buildings? You know, you're seeing pieces of this overall piece for how do we get there? So, we're doing fairly well in this process. Green infrastructure, this is really more the area of conservation question in terms of buying open space. When we did this six years ago, we were about halfway to our target of open space. We've now achieved that target. But you see some of these projects in terms of zoning regulations that encourage open space, limited development projects that we do, certainly green infrastructure projects in terms of stormwater. And so, we do really, this is one of the areas we do really well in. And then sort of downtown, obviously, a lot of the big debate going on has been about infill, and I never actually liked the term infill. But, you know, so we talk about right sizing where development occurs. And this chart, the blue, is where our housing starts compared to where we want them to be. So, the blue was sort of our success stories. The brown was less success. So, the blue was basically housing in downtown Florence, more or less within a mile of those areas, at the state hospital, and cluster developments, cluster developments even in suburban areas. And so, we did really well in this process. It's important to remember in this, in this whole, the reason I don't like infill is we've been really successful getting a huge percentage of housing starts within walking distance to downtown, but our population size, the number of people per dwelling unit is dropping so fast that even though for 30 years, we've had a lot of new units within walking distance to downtown, we actually have fewer people living now within walking distance to downtown than we did 30 years ago. So, that's in some ways why the pressure on us for infill continues. We want to have a vibrant downtown. Once you get in your car, if you live in the western part of the city, you get in your car, you're probably more likely to eat East Hampton than North Hampton, and once you get in a car, you don't care where you go. The people who walk downtown are the ones who spend the money there and support, and so that's going to continue to be a piece. Walkability comes both from the, you know, who lives downtown against walkable, but also how are we adding sidewalks? Are we adding bike lanes? We're doing all those things. So, we've been, we were successful six years ago, and I think we've probably even been more successful in the last six years in these areas. So, you see more of these coming back and forth. So, then the next thing we're going to talk about, and most of this will be Carolyn, but we just sort of, you know, obviously, we keep working on improving the process. So, the thing on the left is basically just to remind you of all the things that we've done in the last decade, and most of you had, George was probably involved with some of these things, but I just want to take you back down memory lane and again, to remind you of why we're here. So, it used to be during building boom periods, you know, when there wasn't a recession, the planning board would routinely meet until midnight. And we've done a lot, and continue hearings, and it was really brutal process for planning board members, for applicants, for the public.
(laughing)
So, we did two big, I mean, we've done three big things. One frankly, is we've been successful at moving development from out in suburban areas to more urban areas. And so, that means subdivisions that are excruciating have all but disappeared. And so, that's one reason you have less time. The subdivisions could be, you know, several hours per project. The second is we had an enormous overlap, this is one of the first things, 20 years ago, maybe 25 years ago, but we had enormous overlap between the zoning board and the planning board. It was sort of random, right? So, 1974, almost everything went before the zoning board. And then we had site plan approval, started in 19, early 80s, and that came to the planning board, but then the special permits were really just divided, right? If it required a special permit in 74, it stuck with the zoning board. If we added a new zoning special permit, it came to the planning board and didn't make a lot of sense. You spent a lot of time reviewing things that went to the zoning board and making recommendations. So, we sort of rationalized it. We said, if it requires a site plan, the special permit that's associated should come to you all. If it doesn't require a site plan, since the zoning board has time, they should do things like home occupation, which used to require more special permits, signage, and those sort of things. And it's really cut back their workload even more dramatically than yours, but your workload as well. So, that was the first thing we did, I'd say 15 or 20 years ago. And then more recently, probably on George's first term on here, we looked at the permits in detail that you were approving and which permits we almost always approving. And those, we moved many of them from special permits to site plan approvals. So, accessory apartments where it wasn't visible from the street used to require a special permit. That's now either by right or by site plan depending on what we're doing. And so, there's a few things like, I mean, a lot of those things we moved over in the categories. We shortened the approval process. So, you all see this, you know, Carolyn's job is the tough love approach. So, her job is to be really tough about vetting applications and not letting them on your agenda until there's a chance it could be acted on one night. And then, when it could be acted on one night, we hope that most of them are, obviously, some really complex projects, going to be one, two, three hearings, but those should be exceptions rather than the norm. And then obviously, you typically act on the permit the same night that you hear it. And that's helped. We had a problem, there's a Gazette expose 15 years ago on how the planning board was horrible at reaching quorums. And it wasn't actually you had a problem reaching quorums, it was if you had five people on a special permit, you closed the public hearing, and then two weeks later, you wanted to vote on it? And you had five people, again, you had a quorum, but not the same people, you couldn't act. And so, moving on one night was, it was a big process. And we actually become, I'm sure developers always complain to you, but our process is probably faster than most communities around here in the process. So, that's where we are now. We've done a couple of other things playing in terms of the streamlining process. We have two areas where planning staff can issue permits, and there are things that are basically this not discretion, right? So, someone comes in, one of them had signs, what was the other one?
There were some driveway side lot line access and also a limited number of solar voltaic installations.
And they're not, it hasn't really made a big difference in workload because there's not many of those things, I don't know, one a year, you know, if that. But it's sort of symbolic, it's saying, you know, if nothing else, selling city council on there are some staff permits that are acceptable, the things that, you know, we want you all because you represent the community and you have a difference of opinion, and so following the law, you could still disagree. And that's basically the line. If reasonable people come up with different answers following the same law, then that should go before a citizen committee. If five people reading the same thing should always come up with exactly the same outcome, then that's the stuff that makes sense for it. So, we've done some of that, it was really more experimenting, didn't come to much. And then a lot of zoning reform, again, some of you have been involved, some aren't, the URC, URB, the densification of those, to a lesser extent densification, URA, increasing height limits and getting rid of the last dimensional requirements on central business district, allowing housing above the first floor in office industrial, actually changing the name of office industrial from special industrial to office industrial to represent what's there. So, those have all been sort of what we've been moving on. And so, we think these should be the workload going forward as we try to prioritize things, but obviously, you all have to make sure you're comfortable with it. So, I'll just go through this quickly, and Carolyn's going to take you in more detail, but ignore the detached accessory apartments, but just thinking about, are there other opportunities to expand the administrative site plan for things that make sense, for things where it's not a lot of discretion involved? And Carolyn's going to talk about the accessory apartments, is that one of them?
Sorry. You really want to scan the computer?
Tell it to wait 10 hours.
Of course. That's the most I'm supposed to do. I think it's like always there because, how come it's not like accepting it? Oh.
I think you started the scan.
Okay. I swear I said no, four hours. Okay, maybe it won't let me do it. So, then, you know, we know that some of the zoning still doesn't make sense, and so we want to start thinking about those areas. The ones we're going to start talking about tonight are places where you have a zoning district that's almost an island, right? You have dense development and suddenly goes to a different zoning district because somebody in 1974 during the public hearing process said, we think we should have a different zoning or some, I mean, it's not always rational, so we're going to talk about those. So, think about sort of rationalize what the districts are. I mean, to me, the zoning should always tell a story that matches the comprehensive plan, right? Why do we have this district? And so, we're going to begin talking about tonight and then later on is what are the places we don't know why we have it that way? And so, those are the things we're going to start with now, but then going forward, keep continuing looking at URA. URA gaze, again, is this, it's not a clear logic where the URAs are, and so, there's probably other places to look at. The net zero energy buildings, what are the incentives we can do for that? Last meeting, we talked about the form-based code downtown in Florence, that'll be coming before you all are there. And then our lighting, Carolyn, this is probably staying somewhere too long. Carolyn, we wrote the zoning code for the lighting a decade ago, and we were probably the state of the art. And then LED lights came along and our zoning doesn't really make sense. We have to come back and revisit those things, so.
So, Wayne, that first bullet, the administrative site plan, that's what you were talking about, what might be handled within the planning office? And those would cover detached accessory apartments?
That's the conversation. So, I'm going to turn this over to Carolyn. Do you think this will-
Okay, all right.
Do you want to stay here and just tell me what took this?
Yeah, I don't, does that work? Is that okay? Yeah. Yeah, so you want to jump right in. I mean, the idea about creating more projects that would fall under administrative site plan is to sort of respond to people who have said, you know, it's burdensome and onerous to go through the whole process, to come to the planning board, it costs money. So, the smaller developers or the homeowners that might want to add one or two units have to do the same amount of work and expend almost the same amount of money. And so, by creating sort of a different threshold of permitting for those projects that are probably a little bit simpler, it makes sense and it would probably be a good conversation for you all to have. But the idea, the goal is to take some of those things that we could really specify exactly what those approval criteria are so that, again, we're not, there's not really discretionary permit that's being granted, but it's all spelled out ahead of time in the zoning. And, you know, take them one step at a time. Don't go through the entire code and start making a bunch of changes, but try to incrementally add those permits that might make sense and break down some of those barriers to people who want to create one or two residential units. So, the idea though, is to still have a clearly defined process where we would notify abudders. I mean, this is a concept we've come together internally just to think about what would be important for people in this transition, not only for board members, but also for residents who bought these projects. So, create a procedural, a very clear procedure for people in which we would still mail notice to the abudders, there would still be an opportunity for those abudders to come and sit with the staff as evaluation of the project were being made, and then a notice to the abudders that a decision at the staff level had been made. And then create an appeal process that comes to the planning board. So, it wouldn't cut out, you know, a secondary review process that is pretty low threshold. You wouldn't have to go to court in order to appeal something like that. So, that's the kind of thinking that we've had internally about how we could do that. And the first, one of the initial permits that we've talked about looking at is detached accessory apartments. And the reason for that is to look at, and you can change this, I don't think I have anything on the next slide, but I'm sort of moving to the next slide, is that we've heard from the Housing Partnership that people have stated that accessory dwelling units, which again, are by definition only part of a single family home, so it's adding one smaller unit to an existing single family home. Right now, attached units are allowed by right. Detached units have required a special permit for 20-plus years. The zoning board has rarely turned those down. And as we move in the direction of trying to figure out, how do we, not only how do we create more housing units, how do we remove some of those impediments? Those are, so those single family homeowners may want to try to do these things, but they're then having to go through a slightly more burdensome process than the folks that want to do an attached unit. We've also changed the zoning to allow second principal structures on properties by site plan anyway, site plan to the planning board. So, that's even a lower threshold than the current special permit for detached accessory dwellings. So, the idea is to sort of test it out with these detached accessory dwellings. And, but, but keeping in the spirit of these being sort of really small projects that generally get approved, and that we think we could define what approval would mean very easily, you know, buffers, the parking has to be in a certain location on the parcel, you still have to meet your setbacks, all of that's already defined.
So, you just take out the interpretation and make it-
Yeah, right. And so, you know, this has sort of been partially on the punch list for the Housing Partnership for a long time, but they've actually wanted to have any accessory dwelling units, no matter where they're located on the property, just be allowed, some members anyway. And what we think is there's still not community consensus to allow less than the standard setback, which we don't now, but, so, we're not pushing it further than what the rules would require now, we're just, we want to explore making it a staff approval, just like attached units are staff approval essentially by the building department.
You mentioned there's not consensus just on this, that one particular unit. Has there been a lot of actual formal debate on detached accessory units, like where somebody wants to put her in-law apartment above the garage, but it doesn't meet setbacks? I mean, has there been a lot of, in a public setting, has that really been discussed?
So, when we went through, not specifically for accessory units, when we went through the zoning changes for A, B, and C in 2010, 11, 12, 13, there was a lot of discussion about setbacks. And where, by allowing infill, there was concern that the new units would be taking up all that open space and changing the character of the neighborhoods potentially too much unless you kept, you know, sort of the standard side setbacks. We did modify the side setbacks in the URC district because it just matched what's on the ground. So, it was 15 feet to the side lot lines, and now it's 10 feet because frankly, there were a lot of non-conformities because they were mostly at 10 feet anyway. But in B and A, they remained at 15 feet. We did change the front setback for both C and B to 10 feet from 20, but that's different because you're at the street as opposed to abutting a name. So, but on the other side, we've had people, I've had people call various times every year about wanting to convert their garage and it's too close to the property line. So, those individuals really want their own project, but then those same individuals sometimes show up to public hearings fighting new units on other properties in their neighborhood. So, you know, I don't know if that, that's a clear indication of what the community wants. So, it may be worthwhile to think about that. But I think maybe the incremental step is to say, let's keep the setbacks the way they are, but reduce the burden for the permitting part of it, and then see what the next step is. Maybe we do allow those existing garages that are four feet from the lot line convert to residential space.
Sorry, George. Would the administrative site plan review give you an opportunity to also apply conditions? Or is it really just sort of like checklists, you've done it, like-
I think it would have to be checklist because conditions are sort of then become discretionary and then-
So, I guess the nature of my question is also, is sort of like, are we like losing out on an opportunity to have, to use positive conditions if there are things that, you know, we're hoping to achieve?
I think we can do conditions that have a back way door approach of turning something down. So, if it's about requiring landscaping or fencing, I think we could do that as part of that.
Right, but I guess I was thinking more that the zoning would say, you need to have X type of buffer. And so, maybe the condition is, well, in this location needs to be a fence versus landscaping as opposed to, you know, turn your house around and-
Yeah, yeah. No, I like the idea, I just want to make sure that staff would have the same opportunity that we have to kind of-
Yeah. And I think that would be sort of the trick in drafting the language is what you all, you know, and you all could certainly, you know, we look for your input on that, what makes sense to write, write in there, what's important when we're thinking about detached units that would be in the backyard of a single family homeowner's property.
So, the one, not concern, but the one observation I have is that what I hear- So the one, not concern, but the one observation I have is that, what I hear is there's a lot of folks, especially downtown and the, around the whole infill concept, and I appreciate that you think it's the wrong term for it, but there's a lot of kind of pushback on infill, mostly because I don't think people understand it. So when a new, when any kind of dwelling is built or an expansion in a neighborhood or that seems to affect the character of the neighborhood, and that's very subjective, of course, people raise their hand, that infill's bad, here's another case of infill that we shouldn't allow, you know? And I know a couple of times that's happened with the attached dwelling units, you know, there's some really big examples around the city where, you know, it was a big unit that was attached to another unit and it surprised neighbors. So infill gets used as the boogeyman by a lot of people, I think, for very appropriate kind of situations. So somewhere I'd love to have, if we're going down this route, and I'd love to have some kind of, oh, an opportunity for the public to hear about infill again, you know, and exactly what it is and what have been good examples of it and why we do it. And maybe that would be an opportunity to change kind of the name for it. And I appreciate that in these situations where it might come through just staff review, that there's the same advisement notices to all the abutters, you know, so they have that opportunity. Because I've been surprised in my years in the board when the, when the board kicks around a proposed zoning change and we go through all the ins and outs of it and everything seems to be hunky-dory, and then we have a public hearing and folks come with very interesting perspectives on it that really change. Holy cow, I never thought of that because I, I didn't live there, I didn't see it from that perspective, so.
So just to pick up on something George was saying, if, you know, if we sort of move into this new model, like, you know, where it's staff administrative site plan, would that, would that have to have its own hearing, like, or is it something that we would recommend to, what is the actual, can you just reiterate, like mechanically, like how would it?
Yeah.
Who waves the magic wand and says like, you know, or would there be a chance to say like, hey, we want to do this and here's why, and we're going to talk about infill and this is much better for everybody if you guys can just do this, like, yeah, what does that look like?
Well, I think it would be very, I think, I think it would be spelled out and straight, I would hope it would be straightforward in that the, there, there, the process would just be either staff approval or not. I think, and the notice is really just sort of as a bridge, I think, between where we have been with special permit and these detached units.
Right, I think I mean more like, if, if that happens, like, is there a chance for us to say, like publicly, like citywide, hey, there's going to be this change, heads up, everybody, here's why.
Oh, you mean for the zoning ordinance?
Yeah, exactly.
Oh, 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 oh.
Yeah, yeah.
So, well, it would have to go through the same public hearing process that any zoning ordinance is. So we are having this big PV.
Right.
Public hearing for the solar, ground-mounted solar panels jointly with Legislative Matters Committee. The same thing could happen, we might try to get the press involved in, I mean, I haven't done any outreach for this solar change, which by some people, I think, could be considered a big change. It's hard to know what people will feel is important and what's not important. But yes, there's a public hearing process.
So there would be like a.
And potentially two public hearings if you didn't do a joint public hearing with the city council. But it would be a planning board hearing and, and yes, so in meetings ahead of that, you could, you know, publicly announce it on TV and say, hey, the upcoming attraction.
One reason we don't want to mention setbacks is what we're talking about for detached accessory apartments is you could tear down your house and rebuild exactly the same setback, you know, without going through any approvals at the same setback. So we're not getting, it won't be any closer to a neighbor than someone could do by expanding their house.
But I think the, the point about changing the language or trying to modify that discussion is important because we really need to, you know, Wayne was saying, we need to figure out what we're going to be when we grow up. I don't know that we're ever going to grow up, it's sort of a new chapter on where do we need to redirect and define because of these important issues, we need to be providing housing for a whole range of people at different incomes, at different needs. We also need to, you know, support downtown commercial development. And so all, all of those things that are in our metrics that we try to measure in terms of being a sustainable community means that things are going to change and, and we've changed in population. So how do we offset those, you know, demographic shifts in a way that builds on our history, but also means things are going to look differently on the ground?
Well, when it comes to this too, the big pattern that's happening is just the aging of our community.
Right.
So younger people with their parents moving in and they want to have them live nearby, you know, so accessory structures become.
Right, and we don't want to farm them out to.
Right.
So what are our next steps in terms of, is this something that we should discuss and make a recommendation tonight to you, or is it something?
Well, I just started working on the language, so probably, it may be more productive for you to, so this is the preview, it sounds like you guys are interested in maybe looking at that as a change. So I can proceed on that path and provide some proposed language to look at at another meeting and then you can weigh in on that.
What would really help me when we discuss that is a couple of live examples of what an accessory dwelling looks like in a neighborhood and, and even some of the ones of the attached accessories, so.
That you don't even see now.
That we don't see now, but at one time, we're, and I know where a couple of those are, I could take some photos of it, just so we had a good idea of that. Because I struggle with explaining to some of my friends exactly what infill is and where it really benefits us and where sometimes, yeah, it is kind of very rough on a neighborhood, but.
Right. Okay. All right. So the next thing, we've been talking, our map changes. And I know over the last, I think I pulled this up maybe originally two or three years ago, we talked about urban residential A map changes, meaning rezoning the areas of A that don't necessarily make sense. And we looked at the entire city and talked about where some things maybe shift to suburban residential, some things shift to commercial, others just go to this, what the surrounding district is. And this actually came on the heels of Sustainable Northampton back 11 years ago, 10 years ago, when there was a lot of discussion about, yes, we feel like we need to change our development patterns and we want to be able to build more units closer into town, but don't forget to cover all the neighborhoods and not just focus on the B and C districts, but also include changes to A. And we haven't gotten there yet. So with a deep breath, I feel like, you know, even in the face of some of this pushback on projects that you all have seen, it's really important to sort of revisit that and say, some of these districts really don't make sense because there's, URA again means only single-family homes. And so you can do an accessory apartment, but you can't do a two or a three family, you can't do any kind of multifamily. So the next slide I'll show you is the bigger picture, but what we were, are thinking is there are a couple of bites that we think are, we want to start on. So instead of trying to tackle the whole URA map at once, let's take, because the, this will need community outreach and we'll have to sit down with the neighborhoods and have public meetings just on that, I think, before we go through the zoning changes. So if we take chunks of this at a time as opposed to the whole city, we might be able to make some headway. And so the, on the right side, the colors, I'm sorry, they don't show up so well, but the U R, this is an area on the Round Hill Road, on the backside of Clark School, former Clark School, I guess. There are two strips of urban residential A and they go up Bancroft and around, wrap around to Round Hill. And the other one is Langworthy. And the entire neighborhood to the west is urban residential B, the entire neighborhood to the east is urban residential C, except for these two little strips. So there are, in some cases, there are some two families, I think Langworthy is all single-family, but these are lots that are very similar to everything around it. You just aren't allowed to do more than one unit on the property. And it's very close to downtown. In some cases, there, there are a couple of through lots actually that go from Bancroft to Hillside. And so you could potentially carve off another building lot because there's only one house on it. So it's, it provides an opportunity for a modest amount of potential housing.
Didn't we do some of those changes about 15 years ago in that neighborhood from URB? Or did we propose that? There was an attempt, so it was proposed and.
The war changes, the minimum lot size for URA shrunk. So that part happened, but there was no map change.
But before that, you're right. So Ward Avenue was included in that because that's another chunk that's URA surrounded by B and C.
And there was a lot of pushback.
And there was a lot of pushback.
So can you just describe what the difference between B and C is?
Yeah, so C is the most dense residential district and it surrounds downtown Northampton. And that's pretty much, there's another piece up there in the left corner, which I'll talk about, but primarily it's around downtown. And, and you could have, the heights are 50 feet, you can have multifamily of any number of units so long as you meet the minimum lot size requirement. In B, it's primarily, primarily single, two, and three families. You could have more units if you had a bigger parcel and it's more, it's less focused on multifamily, you know, stacked this way and more about sort of single-family form, like townhouse development side by side as opposed to stacked units. So it's a little bit less dense, there's less density allowed in the B district. And B goes sort of from that C core, west of downtown and then surrounds Florence Center, basically, and then there, and then out South Street is, is B. Much of the built area within Northampton Core is B district, I would say. So those two map changes on the right for that Round Hill neighborhood, we would recommend sort of starting the process on. The other map change is on Bridge Road, so up on the corner, you see where it says HB? That is the Big Y Shopping Plaza. So it's basically this neighborhood that's sandwiched between Cook Avenue and Bridge Road is zoned now suburban residential and rural residential, even though it's so close to those commercial districts. And on the other side of Bridge Road is all B, urban residential B. It also goes up Cook Avenue and there's a, if you see the URC bubble, there's a apartment complex across on that backside, you know, across behind Walmart, that's urban residential C. It's the only, I think there are three pockets of URC outside of downtown Northampton and that's one of them. And just because it's so high density, you know, that concentration of apartments. So the idea here is to pull that in to URB, the lots are really not that large anyway. They're primarily built out, but there is some opportunity for other housing development potentially. And it's really walkable on that backside to the commercial district. And then the bike path isn't too far on the other side of Bridge Road.
Right, that makes a lot of sense.
Lathrop Community is already URB there on the far left, which is the other label that says URB. So it is sort of sandwiched in as sort of that odd RRSR pocket. So that's another.
And then actual Fitzgerald Lake kind of conservation area behind it to the.
Right, so that would stay, well, now it's zoned conservation, which is farms, forests, and rivers, but there is some RR to, that is not part of Fitzgerald Lake, that's a little bit south of that on the north side of Bridge Road, like where the cemetery is and that area. So those are.
Has that ever come up before?
Yes, for a long time. So there was a property owner, he recently passed away, who lives right on Bridge Road. And he, for years and years, was filling his property because he wanted to build, create new lots. And he petitioned the city to change his land to URB. And we said, you know, it didn't make sense, just his property, we need to look at the bigger picture. We also have talked at various times about waiting for traffic modifications and patterns to be, or the traffic control situation on Bridge Road to be redesigned because of that tough intersection with Hatfield before any zoning changes. But we don't know how long to wait for that. We don't know that it makes sense to wait forever for that. So that's the extent of that.
Yeah, no, I think that makes a lot of sense.
And he will roll over when it happens.
No kidding, I know.
Sad.
Yeah. So, next slide, please.
Never assaulted you, did he, Wayne?
Yeah.
He mellowed in his years. So moving beyond those sort of things that are right on our table that we'd like to switching now are future URA map changes, sort of after we get that first chunk. And the map on the right is, shows that the bright fuchsia are the URA pockets. So the big triangly shaped area on the east side of that map is, includes Child's Park, which we talked about previously about going to Farms, Forests, and Rivers because that's never going to be developed anyway, so take that out of URA. But then the surrounding neighborhoods on, off of Prospect Street, sort of north a little bit up to the bike path, they're all surrounded by B, but that district is A and also Woodlawn is A. So that's what that triangle is. And then the little squiggly one just south of that is the Ward Avenue neighborhood that, and it's really just the tip of that neighborhood.
So would you guys recommend changing that or leaving it as is?
No, changing it, but doing it one piece at a time?
One reason Ward Avenue is sort of lower priority is symbolically, we should do it. It's next to URB, the neighborhood's next door are URB. Practically, given the geography and given the homes being built out, I'm not sure we're going to spend a lot of time because I don't think you need a single housing unit, at least in my lifetime of happening there, so. But, you know, we should, it doesn't make sense, so why not?
And then moving towards Florence, the next district west is really north of, so that Strawberry Hill, Fox Farms neighborhood, which is sandwiched between, just north of Florence Center and then up to Bridge Road is A. It's not significantly different in lots area, but it just, it was created when in the 60s or 70s and it was, you know.
Did that get reduced the last time around? That, that area, did it get smaller or did it, we make an effort and we got a lot of pushback and it stayed?
We never really went, I don't think we were trying to do that one yet.
I remember talking about that.
I mean, so obviously with the URA changes, the lot size and the frontage was adjusted just a few, you know, in 2013, but not the actual map change. So that hasn't changed at all over time. And then you move into Leeds, and actually, there's a big chunk that's Look Park, that would go to Farms, Forests, and Rivers. But then there's Leeds. And, and again, there may be some opportunities for one or two units here and there, probably not a lot, but it, again, it's sort of, it's, I'm not sure that it makes sense, although there was a lot of discussion on the planning board about maybe just leaving that for the time being. So, you know, that's, we can handle that when we get to it and, and have deeper conversation about whether, what makes sense for Leeds. And then there's an area, I think that's Chesterfield Road, that's URA, that maybe makes sense to go to something less dense off of Chesterfield Road. So that's the map changes for URA. The other changes we've talked about and we've given you, you know, some briefing on is form-based code.
Before we go there, I just wanted to check in to make sure we don't have to open that other hearing at 7:30. Is there any bureaucratic?
Ten of eight.
Hearings, you can stop and, or.
We can do it later.
Yeah, you can do it later.
Okay.
I don't, did anybody come in for that?
No.
Okay.
Are you all here for the 7:30 hearing? Okay.
So.
Just here to hear this conversation about planning and, good? You're just here to hear this conversation about planning and good?
We're, we're graduate students and we're like, starting to learn planning, we're studying landscape design and we're working with a planning board in Abington. And so we're trying to learn a little bit of up-form based code and kind of see what we can glean from the conversation.
Do we have any issues in general? It's off of the agenda, so...
Sorry, we don't have more hearings on our agenda today. That's usually more interesting.
So we've started the conversation about form-based code for downtown Florence and downtown Northampton. And we're, we actually have a meeting next week with the consultants to, sort of as a follow-up to the public meetings that were held back in October. So we'll know a bit more about where we are in that process after next week. And then potentially think about if there's a way to extrapolate a type of form-based code for residential districts. We don't know yet, but we mentioned that previously.
Just briefly, so I mentioned this briefly last meeting, but as we talk about form-based code for downtown Florence, we chose those areas in some ways because it's not going to be difficult. It's not that different from what we're doing. But I think we definitely want to do more form-based code elsewhere in town. And I think one of the priorities setting for you all is, after we do Florence and downtown, do we keep doing commercial industrial areas? Because basically it's easy and it's a better code and it's easy. Or do to the neighborhoods, which it could be an excruciating process, everybody's nervous, but it could address exactly what George said, it gives people more comfort level of what the design will be. And so you don't decide now, but just keep that in the back of your mind, what's next after Florence and downtown?
And then the other thing we've kicked around, you know, no, we're not necessarily pushing one way or the other, but things that we're thinking about are, how do we create incentives for creating buildings that are net zero? You know, how can we just push in that direction further? We know, we've gotten the stats back for our evaluation for the community and certainly with commercial buildings, that's a huge chunk of our, our consumption and greenhouse gas impact. So, you know, what is it that we could do legally from a land use perspective to affect building, changes to the energy standards for buildings? So, you know, is that something that we add to any special permit standard for the B and C districts when larger developments come forward or, or something like that? So, you know, do, are there either permit incentives to do that or, I don't know, if density incentives make sense, but mostly maybe just streamlining, streamlining the permitting may be a way to do that. So those are sort of some of the other things we're thinking about. And then the only other thing I wanted to talk about is, are other changes that are coming down in front of you soon, that they've already either been introduced to council or, and will come back to you for public hearing, or are about to be introduced to city council. And those are the lighting standards, which, you know, I had started working on a couple of years ago and we just, it just got pushed to the back burner, but we really do need to address, and you've seen it in your, in the permits that you're reviewing, not only are more standard and more of these lights, available LED lights and systems, but we have also seen the negative impacts of LED, just because they're efficient doesn't mean they put off good light or they're designed well not to have off-site impacts. So we're, we have a draft, I'm working with the building commissioner to sort of look at, he has better technical experience and understanding of this stuff than I do. And then I think there's going to be a lot of community conversation about that as well. But that really will be coming in the next couple of months probably for you guys as sort of on a parallel track. And then like I mentioned, we have the public hearing February 11th for the change to the large-scale ground-mounted solar systems and as it relates to the amount of tree clearing allowed for that. And then the other sort of side project is not zoning, but you'll hear about it, is try to get a handle on creating regulations for shared mobility devices like scooters and bikes that are...
Was that Alana?
What's that?
No scooters.
Right.
Stop with the scooters.
So that goes, that'll be just city council because it's not a part of zoning, it's, it's actually going to be introduced in the, more of the infrastructure section of the, and the DPW side of the, of the code. But it'll be important for you to...
Not like on the law enforcement side of the code around vehicular traffic or, that's not where it would come from?
Well, so it's partially that. So there's a whole series of code that addresses how you can use the street and the sidewalk. And so it sort of will be wrapped into that because we don't have any bikes, bike parking standards, actually, like where you're allowed to park bicycles, where you're not allowed to park bicycles. So this will introduce that, not just for bike share type of facilities, but for anybody on any bike or any...
You have like newsbox standards? Or is that...
That's a whole nother standard.
Little wrinkle, but...
Yeah.
Keep dealing with that. Our plan is to get rid of all the private newsboxes downtown and replace them with sort of the newspaper condos that you see. Smith College, John and Green is the only we have here.
Yeah.
So we can have sort of, you know, good, you know, more attractive boxes.
More attractive, very...
Fewer.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt and it made me think of the sidewalk and that old stuff that happens.
That's a good question.
Right. So, so that will address not only sort of everybody, anybody who wants to park a bicycle, sort of where you're supposed to park them and where you're supposed to keep the sidewalk clear of any of these, but also create a permit system for companies that want to create private bike share or scooter or anything else.
Denied.
But we are taught, I mean, the way that it's being introduced is that we don't want to allow private companies to be able to locate in downtown Northampton because we already have, you know, we spend an enormous amount of time and money to establish valid bike. So we want to make sure that, you know, has a fair chance of being successful. So that's, so that's, that will be coming, but again, it's not zoning. So you, you won't be involved in the public hearing, you can certainly participate in the conversation.
Change to the lighting standards. So you recently developed tree planting standards that were accepted, similar to this. Are there new planting standards that have become codified?
So there's a tree planting guide that has been adopted and, and I don't know the technical or mechanical way that it was adopted, but the mayor has officially identified it as sort of the city's tree planting guide. We use it, we reference it in sort of subdivision standards and then in landscape standards for the zoning, for site plan, it references that tree planting guide.
But it's not as legislated as the lighting standards.
Right. And that's it.
It's great. It's exciting stuff.
Yeah.
It's terrific.
Would pedal pubs fall under shared mobility?
Yeah, that's so funny.
Oh, yeah. So popular. And good in better weather climates, in other weather cities.
What's the premise, though? You get on a, you bring your own alcohol and you get on this thing and they...
Use tool around town.
Tool around town.
With your friends and right.
You're like an oddity.
See and be seen.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
Yeah, it's just a party vehicle.
That's it. Great.
They said on the man-made trailer, it won't be an issue, even though it's yay wide, that they'll pull over to the side and let the bikes go by easily and...
You'd have to pull over every 30 seconds, it would seem.
It seems so.
So you'll keep us posted. We're in agreement, it seems like, and moving forward on all the things you discussed. Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Shall we open up our 7:30 public hearing?
Okay.
Great.
When you look in that crystal ball, are there a lot of big permitting applications coming up before us during the spring, February, March and April or?
Not so far. I mean, people are talking, there's, well, there's one project that may form, but nothing beyond that.
Well, it looks like we have time to finish that treaty.
So when you look in your 10-year crystal ball, are there any URA areas left in the city?
Well, yeah, I'm wondering, like, do we just eliminate, at some point, is that just no longer even part of our zoning?
That may be, yeah. I don't, I think it's hard to explain a lot of those areas that are URA. So I think it probably makes sense to, and you know, we tried, do you remember, we tried to change the name, so we named what it meant? And that was a hard thing.
The URA is only single-family, right?
Right.
Carolyn, what's the best way for me to get the zoning book, so to speak, in hard copy? To download it and three-hole punch it myself? I mean, we don't have an inventory of those, right?
Right.
You don't...
You can print two, two sheets per page, double-sided.
Double-sided.
That's my, two sheets per page and double-sided, then you get four pages per sheet of paper.
And the print is still okay that you can...
I mean, for now, but, you know, only in my early...
Because I can see this kind of conversation, it might be very, very handy to have in front of me once in a while, so I can look at...
Right, well, I mean, to that point on the lighting, I started creating a red line version and there's so many dramatic changes that I just had to create.
Clean slate.
If you want to go look at the old one.
Yeah, makes sense. Well, if everyone is okay with everything we discussed.
Yeah.
We'll move on to our 7:30 hearing for withdrawal of a special permit for 236 South Street. I don't have the map ID in front of me, sorry.
So we have to make a formal approval to accept the withdrawal?
Right. And you should determine whether you want to do it with prejudice or without, which, so if you did it with prejudice, they couldn't come back within two years unless the plan substantially changed from what it was. If you do it without prejudice, then you can turn around and file again. I'm not sure that, you know, I, I guess I would probably recommend with prejudice because you didn't, it didn't seem like it was...
That's pretty much where we left off anyway. We needed a substantial change and I imagine that's most of the reason why they withdrew.
Right, right, right.
But if he decided that he wanted to not make as much money, if that's what it came down to, and you say with prejudice, then he can't come back for two years.
Two years.
No, with, unless he substantially changes the plan.
Right.
The plan is whatever he legitimately filed, that last version with the plaintiff office.
So what would the, what's the downside without prejudice? What could happen that would...
You would just see it again, the same way.
Why would he do that, though? It would cost him so much money.
If he knows we're not going to...
Logical.
Right, it's not, I'm just laying out the...
Right, yeah.
And he can't form, so we have to be here to do this because you can't formally withdraw.
You have to vote, you have to accept the withdrawal.
You have to file...
Because it was, you know, you were in the middle of a public hearing. And so the decision, a decision has to be issued saying that the board accepted withdrawal because you've already partway through the process, otherwise there's no end point.
Then we've ghosted.
In culture.
I get it.
Without him walking out of here, he said he's done closure, but I guess not.
All right, so I would move...
We have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the withdrawal of the content, of the special permit of the site planned by Benjamin Lewis for 12 new units at 236 South Street. There's no map IDs, so I'm not sure with the appropriate map ID, and I'd say without prejudice.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. I would say without.
Do we want to have any discussion?
So just a quick question, we already closed the public hearing. We closed the public hearing, this is a...
Oh, actually, you need to close and accept the withdrawal.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So maybe...
So moved.
We can do that all in one motion?
Yeah.
Do we have discussion or...
So basically, if we felt like he would come back with the same plan, then we might want to do it with prejudice, but since that seems highly unlikely, there's no reason to...
Since we rejected the last plan, it would, it wouldn't make sense for him to do that. But if he chose to do that, we'd end up rejecting it again, so...
So all we risk is just more of our time, basically?
Listening to it all over again.
Yeah, okay. I promise I wouldn't let that happen. All those in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? No? Unanimous. Do we have an A and R?
One A and R. So this is for the former Willer Park on Burst Pit Road where the solar installation and just healthy marijuana production. So it's actually carving up the parcels into those two different entities, or for the purposes of those two different entities to purchase, but also creating the 20, almost 26 acre parcel for city open space. So it's all in one, this A and R. And you remember the solar array doesn't need frontage, so it's off to the side with no frontage, but access on that shared road coming in from Ryan Road.
Got it. Is there a motion to endorse?
So moved.
Second? Jana? All those in favor?
My kids were home for the holidays and I went to walk the dog and I forgot all about that. My brother lives on Cardinal Way and so we park and I'll walk the dog. So the three of us, I said, oh, there's a great path you can go around and we got, you know, 50 yards into it and then it was all clear cut. Yeah, it was just, it was, and then I was like, oh, that's right. And you could see the houses that used to have a nice buffer of forest between them and the pit and now that buffer's gone.
That's it?
That's it.
Any final motion?
I'll move to adjourn the meeting of the planning board.
Any second? Jana? All those in favor?
No discussion?
Sorry. I forgot.